Mark?
Here.
Erica?
Here.
Jeremy?
Here.
Mike?
Present.
MC?
Here.
And JJ is absent.
You'll join me for pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I most appreciate the help of the Lord. We come to you Father at this time, asking your blessing upon this community and on our House of President, also on our city and our police departments and other officials in the city. We pray this business tonight is conducted and brings you honor. We ask that you forgive us where we fail you in Christ's name we pray.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Can I amend it?
Okay.
I would like, um, under follow-ups, an update on SOPs, please.
On SOPs?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Uh, follow-up on SOPs?
Oh, on the SOPs for the departments that don't have them.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Okay, you have a motion by MC. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a second by Jer- Jeremy? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Next item is the May twenty-eighth minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve.
You have a motion by Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Those are approved. Next is the financial report for May. Do I, for the city financials, do I hear a motion to approve? You have a motion by Jeremy. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Those are approved. Next is the water and sewer financials. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have a motion by MC. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Those are approved. Next item is the May fire department report. Do we have anyone here from the fire department? No. Our chief is in his summer military, um, training, so we don't have anyone from the fire department, but you do see his report. Are we ready to go to the police report? Chief?
If you guys have anything, that was the front. Erica, you seem to be going really, really good over that time.
Yeah.
Alright. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Next item is the May water and sewer department report. It's not the, it's not the committee report, it's the department report.
So, uh, I think you all have in front of you the public works, uh, report there that we have. The May item that we need to talk about is water loss. Uh, the good news is, we have seen a reduction in water loss from April to May from seventy-one to sixty-three percent. So we are headed the right way, which we've not seen in quite some time. Please keep in mind, uh, as we started this project to repair, uh, the, uh, the leaks, we only probably got, uh, or have about half a month's worth of data in there in front of you, so we'll need to s- uh, we'll need to look at it more closely over the next couple of months. If you look down on the bottom left, leak fixed, I'm going to go to the very bottom, those leak cards, those are what were developed by our consultant in the field. And you'll see that how many have been fixed. Uh, then if you look over to the right, under leaks detected, those are the leak cards that still await a contractor to, uh, repair, uh, in the field. So we're roughly, uh, halfway through those leak cards, uh, from, uh, where we began. We've also had a couple of, uh, other, um, uh, water leaks, uh, that have re- directly had, that have been repaired as well. So we are headed in the right direction, but it's not, uh, not as fast as we would like to be.
So when we get this all done, what do you anticipate our water loss going to be at that point? After, after we get them all fixed?
Based on, um, I'd have, I've got to think back on the report that we, uh, that we received. I think what they identified was roughly half of what we were seeing in water loss. But remember, that is an estimate. Once you get above about thirty gallons a minute in a, uh, leak underground, it's hard to estimate, is it thirties, forty, sixty? Uh, because they all do it by mist, uh, and, and most of these leaks, if not all of them, where it never did surface. So they were all estimates. So I anticipate that number to be larger. But as it starts drying in the summer, we will start seeing additional breaks on some of the main lines, uh, which will be a little bit easier to identify. But as the ground dries up.
So we're always going to be losing about half of what we're about?
No, that is an est- that's what I was saying in the report, that is only an estimate. So we won't know what the, the actual number is until we get through and fix our leaks.
I think twenty-five to thirty percent would be a goal that we should look forward to achieving.
I hope it gets lower than that.
Uh, twenty-five to thirty percent is, I would call a normal, is what most, most systems say.
That would be the goal to shoot for and then go down from that.
That's correct. But again, we did this project, we tested for leaks, we identified the leaks and we repaired those. Every day that goes by, we have others that show up. So what we've talked about in the water and sewer committee is potentially looking at maybe every year or every other year hiring this consultant to come back in as we monitor this water loss. If we start seeing trends go up, we need to get them back on the calendar and get them in here to help us catch up.
Will it be that much each time? Like, that, that much initial investment from the company?
Yes.
Every, okay.
It's basically time. We're buying time for me. I mean, it will take them about the same amount of time to do the entire system.
Whether there's leaks or not, it takes the same length of time to listen at each location.
I'm just proud to be able to tell you that we're going the other way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Planning Commission report?
David. Planning Commission met last week. We have a whole lot of new business coming up for, uh, next week's meeting in July. Um, we were still looking at the replat prepared without, we were waiting on some, uh, new plats, new overlays, the items that we discussed previously that the commission has requested from them. So it's essentially still in a hold at this point. Uh, what we did, focus on a lot was the second third of our subdivision code and went through that. We had Derek Lynn with Gartner here, of course with Juliette. He's been the one that's kind of the main point of contact going over our subdivision code. And we really gave him a lot of notes for the second third and the, um, landscape code that we would have been. So, but a long lead of code discussion and legal jargon and all kinds of fun stuff. Um, you know, the other thing was, you know, last night's, uh, downtown master plan meeting that we had here. Thank you all for coming out. I think we had a good presentation. Looking forward to getting the actual document from them and then, um, we'll kind of go through that and then y'all will see more of that. The only other thing is barring any unforeseen circumstance, we don't have any real business for the planning commission next week, so we'll probably look at, um, what's the word we're looking for? Not having that meeting in place.
Canceling.
Canceling, there we go. We're going to canceling next week's planning meeting due to lack of official business, since we handled all this stuff in the work session. If you all have any questions, that's all I have at this point.
No, I just, I think the presentation was really good last night. And I liked that they gave us so many different options for the city, how to relocate it. I liked that, that gave us something to think about, I mean.
I agree. And y'all, uh, once we get a little bit of that, you know, we can send it out to Julie and everybody can kind of have a, you know, copy to look at it, we can print them off too, so. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item is usually the June water and sewer committee meeting, but it was postponed last night for the other meeting. Uh, is there anything we would like to say beyond that?
No, we just, we're going to have it next week hopefully.
Yes.
Obviously, water loss and the staffing would return it, but it's.
Right, and it's scheduled for, uh, July first, which is next Monday. Next item is the engineers' report.
I'm on innovation here. Trying to hit the high points, uh, real quick of what we have going on. Um, Highway two sixty-four, um, there's some drainage improvements that we're going to be doing, uh, there. I'm trying to remember the exact location there. I'll cross through the subdivision's name now.
Crossed, right, but it's that, um, that, uh, Ridgewood.
We've got the, uh, permit has been reissued. Uh, we should be, I think, within the next week or two. You know, Julie will be getting with contractors to get those, get that moving forward. Our sanitary sewer master plan, we put that on hold, uh, for a short period during this simultaneous annexation and annex, the annexation that was going through, just not knowing exactly the direction that was going to go, so we just kicked that back off. Uh, so I hope within the, probably the next meeting, not this month's meeting, the next meeting, we'll have some information we can report on the water and sewer and then, and then to this meeting also. The traffic signal, uh, we had to pull together some additional boundary information for Peters and Associates. We got that turned in to them. And this morning, they told me they'll be in a position to get us the design, uh, next week. And then we'll take a look at that and forward that on to RDOT for their review and it should move, uh, move pretty quickly. Now, one thing that we did, uh, uh, find out late last week as well with the new bypass that's going in, um, RDOT has made some adjustments to the leg from the roundabout that ties into the two six, one twelve and two sixty-four intersection. We're going to get our design to them and we've had, we've got to coordinate some with them on what they're getting in right away, so we don't have to redo what we put in as a temporary. We don't want to put two, or put something in to have to just relocate it in a year or two. So that coordination has, has started. Let's see. MS four permit renewal, we are currently working on getting that updated. You, you fall under a, a general permit for MS four, uh, stormwater. And you've, this, you've had two of those five-year permits so far. Uh, we've got to submit an NOI, notice of intent, uh, to be covered under that up general permit for two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-nine. And that's due toward the end of the week. And we're wrapping that up and sending the signature from the mayor and we'll get that turned in for you. Otter Creek Bus Station, uh, we've talked about surge protection and lightning protection. Uh, we expect our electrical sub consultant to be in in a couple of weeks, uh, to go over that, uh, site and provide us some feedback and what we need to do there. The NACA project, uh, things are moving along very well there. We're about sixty-five percent complete, uh, on that project. The RDOT one twelve realignments, uh, it seems like we take, uh, one step forward and two steps back. They've adjusted the bid deadline or the bid, uh, opening for their project on both of the ones that affect us. They, um, the section from Highway six twelve to Wallace Road, that was previously scheduled to, uh, bid on November of two thousand twenty-five, they changed that to May of two thousand twenty-seven. And in the area from Pleasant Grove Road to Highway twelve, it was previously September of two thousand twenty-five. They've updated that to November of two thousand twenty-five. So they continue to adjust and make changes to their design. This one will probably stick, um, since they kicked it out there a little bit further, uh, but it gives us a little more time to get our utilities, uh, in order. The water service area expansion, uh, we've been working on that as well. We're in a position that we have some maps pulled together that we want to go over at the water sewer committee meeting on Monday night, um, and get some feedback there. Once we do that, we would like to visit with our neighbors, uh, more specifically Bentonville and Springdale about, uh, what we were looking at, uh, pulling in for a water service area. Um, and like to get that generally in place before we go, uh, submit to ANRC and we go to public comment. So that is, that is up on the, next up on the system. I think that covers most of the high-level projects. Are there any other questions?
So, um, two sixty-four and Ridgewood, you're still coordinating with RDOT on that?
We have a permit.
You have a permit to fix it?
Permit in hand.
Okay.
And we're getting, uh, within the next couple of weeks, we should have some information back from the contractor to get that taken care of.
Okay. And that probably would, would that fix be something the mayor can just sign off on probably? Or do you think it's going to make the subsides that needs to come to council?
The first, uh, we have taken this to the con- contractor already and I can't remember exactly what the fix was at the time, but it seems like it was fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Fifty to seventy-five, so it'll come to us?
Well, but that was the original and we made changes to it after, after that. It was, it was too much.
Yeah.
So we made some adj- no more than we were looking at. And that's what RDOT wanted us to do to begin with. And we got numbers back and say, hey, guys, no more than we're doing, we need to find a different solution. And they worked with us on that, so we expect that to be a lot lower. And I can't remember exactly, but, uh, it seems like it was a higher number like that.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
So when is the est- estimated completion for NACA? End of the year still?
Yes, it's.
October.
October.
I think the October timeframe is what we've got on the contract right now. So if we can continue good weather, uh, hopefully we'll be able to, uh, get, get to that point or beat it. But if we, we get poor weather and things of that nature, it could be running some challenges. But things are on schedule.
What about Fields Lane?
Fields Lane, we have, we.
Oh, I asked you about that.
Yep, but I, if you remember back, um, I'm trying to remember now, it's probably been four months ago, five months ago, we had an opportunity to submit for a grant, uh, through the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, who actually will then take that further to payment. We started out with a smaller project we were going to ask for for the regional detention of what we call our bowtie lot, I think everyone's familiar with. Uh, but rather than doing just the bowtie lot, we added those improvements into it since, since this grant will basically pay sixty-five cents on the dollar. Uh, unfortunately, we have to wait, uh, until the selection is made. And that's going to be early fall, it's an October timeframe. Uh, but I think it was worth, it's worth the wait because we were one of about ten projects in the state of Arkansas that were approved to move forward to that next level, uh, if any. So it was something, like I said, in the early fall there. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the attorneys' report.
Good evening.
Good.
Have a number of items for the work session, uh, that are coming up. There are manual policies, uh, has some changes, an update to personnel handbook and to finance policies. These are changes, a lot of them are changes and things have just been corrected. An example would be, um, you know, somewhere where it still says we're second to last city or something like that. But I've, I've received these, uh, a number from, from Kim, from the fire chief. There are going to be a number of them that are, uh, you know, are dealing with, uh, fire department. Uh, received some from the mayor, so been working on all those over the last, uh, uh, couple of weeks and, um, so aiming to bring those to the, I'm, I'm about done with them, so I think I'll be ready to bring them to you all, um, for the work session in, in July so we can review them and, and discuss. Along with that, um, starting to, um, uh, going to have to start on, work on the easements and right away or the, uh, property, uh, uh, issues that we got to work out at the golf course. If you recall, through the settlement agreement, we're going to be releasing a number of easements once we turn off the system there. We're retaining the ones that we still need, um, and, uh, so we're going to have to be working that through. Um, I, based on the process we'll have to use, I'll be bringing those through to you all. I'm going to try to do that in a way that makes sense and is kind of orderly, but, uh, there are a lot of easements on that golf course. Fortunately, about thirty of them are ours, about two-thirds are the improvement district, so we don't have to, uh, uh, we don't have to, to, to deal with those. But we do need to go ahead and start working through all those real estate, uh, uh, transactions. So as we're getting closer, as I think we had talked about last year, like in the summer, you know, starting to, uh, to do that work, so I'll be, I'll be doing that as well. And then, uh, the, uh, franchise agreements, I mentioned several times earlier this year about bringing those forward, I plan to do that for, for, uh, this summer. So, uh, maybe not by the next work session, but the next one for August, uh, would be aiming at bringing, um, sort of comprehensive changes to our franchise, updates to our franchise agreements. And that would be for, uh, telephone, um, gas, electric, TV, uh, cable and fiber. Basically, or the, the franchises that we would be updating. With the exception of the fiber, uh, all, everything else is really old, really, really old. So they need, they need some work, um, so that we work on that. We'll be reaching out to the utilities to, to review these things and bringing those forward. So it's likely to be something that you all start seeing in August, but we really start passing in the fall and updating in the fall. Um, so, got a number of things coming up. Any, any questions for me? I've got something on the ward, the resolution for the ward assignment. I'll, I'll talk about that when that comes up, this is a minor, minor deal that I was going to explain with regard to that. Okay, thank you.
Clerk Treasurer's report.
That's just a mission, we will be bringing before a resolution for, um, um.
Yeah, uh, petty cash.
Petty cash. Um, this was a recommendation from our auditors that we needed to change and update our petty cash policy. I'm also going to be bringing to you, um, a new resolution for our EFT as well. Um, those of you who have made comment about our post office, um, it's not getting any better on our end. We'll send off bills and then the checks get lost in the mail. And then we're having to track down where the check is at, I'm having to void the check, rewrite the check. So I'm going to bring in for the council a new EFT policy as well, so we can start paying some of these bills electronically versus having to write checks. Um, we can do it, it's just we need to update the, the policy a little bit so we can, we can get that worked out. Um, I'm also working on my SOPs in my office. Um, and I would like to update my job description as the city clerk treasurer because the poll, or the, um, the job description that we currently have on file is for a second-class city. And we need to go in and just update those job descriptions and my job duties for a first-class city as well and then list what my job duties are, what my expectations are. So I'll be bringing that to the work session as well.
I don't know the resolution for the post office problems. I've been fighting with law for three years over issues. I've had checks lost in the mail. If I send a payment by mail now, I send it certified, which is ridiculous, but we do have a few that we don't do electronically.
Well, if we can pay some of those electronically, it'll also save on postage as well because in July postage is going to go again. So that'll save money on stamps because if we're having to mail it once, then we're having to turn around and mail it again. And then a lot of these, we can have them certified so that we can get them there on time so we're not having to pay later. Well, we're paying the fee.
Upfront.
Upfront for the certified. So if we can just pay it electronically, the officer said that's perfectly fine. It's just we've got to get it for the council and make sure that they pay for it. So, but yeah, post office issue is statewide. It's not just our area, it's entire statewide. Arkansas, the states have the same, same issues. We talked about it last week and it's all the way from down south to the top of the world. So it doesn't matter, all the way in between, we're all having issues with it in our, in our mail. We're not paying to pay on time. So that's why we're all looking at making sure that EFT is, is updated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the mayor's report. Cave Springs is once again being recognized and very favorable. Like KNWA did a recent report referencing niche.com, which is a data analytics company that uses several different factor strengths, cities and different categories. They noted that Cave Springs is ranked as the best place in Arkansas to buy a home. They use census, FBI stat, statistics, schools, property tax rates, home values and other criteria in determining the rankings. Upon entering the niche.com site, I also discovered that Cave Springs is ranked the best place to raise a family in Arkansas and was ranked number nine for the best places to buy a house in America. I have known for years that Cave Springs was a great place, but now the secret's out. Thank you. Next item is public comments. Anybody? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the follow-up questions.
That's unusual.
Yeah.
Do you have public comments?
Good. Oh, okay.
Matt Surpia, is ready. My name is Donna Scanlon. I'm on the PWA Board of Directors for the Ridgewood subdivision. Lisa Bozeman is also here with me and she is on the Board of Directors also. Um, you have all received correspondence from the Board of Directors regarding some issues, outstanding issues that we have been working with the mayor on and getting resolved. And, um, I think the city engineer here mentioned today about, tonight about the, um, the drainage culvert along Highway two sixty-four. And I'm glad to hear that we're making progress on that. That's been going on for several years. Um, but we would also like to, um, we've got some, currently have some, um, drainage, storm drains in, in the subdivision that have erosion around them. Um, there's some large holes in them. He sent me pictures, I don't know if, if someone said that you were having difficulty opening those pictures. But, and I have copies if you need them. Um, but, um, we've, another member of the board talked with the mayor recently. He said that the timeline, hopefully it's in the next couple of weeks to get that done. Um, I guess we would like to ask, is that still the plan?
That is still the plan.
Okay, so they, we can expect to have work done on those?
When they were first brought to me, one was brought to me and it was in front of a house that was being built. And they had not yet done the, the lawn, uh, grading. And I went out and looked at it and talked to the developer and they were talking about when they did their grading, it should be completed. And so when I saw the pictures the other day, was the first time I saw multiple locations. And I talked to our engineer about the best, uh, step to move forward on that. And I've talked to our public works, uh, street side and they're going to be doing that. Uh, he's been out the last couple of days there, but he is going to be bringing a load of dirt out and will be putting dirt inside down. And we will also be replacing your signposts.
Okay. Um, at that point, I, I think we had two board members that met with you in February and wasn't that discussed in a meeting in, in February, maybe?
Yeah, the, the signposts and all of that was discussed.
And the erosion around the, around the storm drains. Because the holes around some of them are significant. And it's a, it's a safety hazard for our residents.
Correct. And I had not seen them yet. I don't think you brought pictures when you came out. You told us, told me about them. And when you, when I saw the pictures the other day, it was not what I had pictured from the one that was done, that I saw previously.
No, that, that house that was, that was being built, that house was done.
It's been a couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah, two, three years ago. And this is erosion that's taken place over years. And there's several of them around the neighborhood that have dirt corroded. If you want pictures of them, I, I can come here and you can.
Yeah.
I'll tell for the board's man, thank you.
That's also, um, some pictures of that storm drain culvert along two sixty-four. And then the second page is the, um, some of the storm drains in the, in the subdivision. So I'm glad to hear and we'll look forward to that. Could you please let us know so that the Board of Directors know so that we can inform our residents that if they see workers up there, that, in the subdivision, that, what's going on?
We will.
Thank you. And also, when work is about to start along two sixty-four and if you need access to that backyard again, which you shouldn't because everything is exposed to the highway. But it would be also nice to let our residents know along that.
We will do that.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else? Next item is the follow-up. The community buildings first, and if you notice, there is a deal in here from Brick Markers. That is what the Community Building Committee is working on as far as a fundraiser. The front sidewalk is going to be a brick sidewalk, and it's going to have the ability. We'll be selling bricks with kind of a memorial brick or promotional brick, however you want to use it. And that's going to be a fundraiser for the community building, primarily for the items that'll be going into the building. And the, we have looked at this, the city attorney looked at our account that we have for donations. These are considered donations. And he has said that this account will be adequate for this purpose. And we're looking into a couple of things as far as payment methods. And once that's confirmed, we'll be setting this up and launching it with promotional. We'll be doing promotional things in a number of different ways. The, there's a couple of examples of the promotional stuff that they provide directly from the website setup. They do these flyers, and people can order by the flyer, or they can order through the website. And they'll do a webpage that can be linked to ours. And so there's a number of different ways that they can utilize that. As far as the actual building, they're making very good progress at this point. And they've got the ceiling just about completely back in it. They're beginning to do sheet rock in the bathrooms, and they've expanded the bathrooms. And there's a lot of progress going on.
Mr. Mayor, I think as far as the being a historical district, we're not gonna have historical district, right? Historical district, last night they were talking about.
Yeah, historical district sometimes can create a negative toward people looking to buy or rent there, because it becomes very expensive to do, to restore some buildings that are in very low level of district, or, you know, very badly in disrepair. And a lot of times, the historical district doesn't give you the option to replace it, it's a hundred percent restore. And so I've known for a long time that that wasn't really the goal. The goal's more of a design standard to maintain that type of atmosphere and that downtown feel that, that feels like it was built in the early nineteen hundreds.
For the community building, okay.
But.
So it's not gonna go on historical district, that's what you're saying?
Well, no, I don't know about this building. It's built to, it's being restored. But I'm talking about.
A double district.
Overlay district, it won't be a historical overlay district. It may be a design overlay district, where there's a design standard that we maintain. But it's not gonna be a historic district, no.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Next item is the R D O C meeting. I mentioned about, I think it was last month, about the. Oh, the appraisers were mentioning that, and there were different rumors going around that the, that the right-of-way was gonna be within six feet of our fire station. And that it was going to require us to tear down the flagpoles and all those things. And I contacted R D O C, Mr. Wiley, who is second in, in charge there directly under the director. And he came out and, well, he didn't come out. He talked to me on the phone twice and discussed my concerns and called me back to let me know that that's not gonna be the case. We had discussed, when we were looking at building the building, they told us to build it right where we had it planned, they would accommodate. And six feet off the building is not very accommodating. He ultimately, after reviewing it, found out that the people doing the appraisals had an old drawing, that it wasn't accurate. And so just to confirm that everything else was okay, he sent out the local engineer that they're contracted with, and two or three people from the R D O C. And we had a meeting along with our planner and we, David, and we were. They brought drawings and discussed the previous discussions we'd had about the seven or eight items we wanted to change, or to ensure that we're done when we accept downtown. They have implemented a, the turn that he was referring to. The turn radius may change once, the reason for that is because we had requested that the trail be brought in along the side of the spur, so that people don't pop out into the road on their bicycle to come into Cave Springs while someone else is looking over their left shoulder at the roundabout and look up, and there they are. And in the original plans, R D O C didn't have any trails coming off of the main bypass on the spurs. Well, they have implemented that now. They have the drawings showing that we're gonna get dedicated from the lane all the way up to the north end of Main Street. David had brought up a suggestion before about Sands Road, because there was a street cut at Sands, but no median cut, and it would mean going up to the roundabout at Wallace to turn around and go stop. And your only way on would be northbound, and it's still in a curved area. Well, they are now looking to bring Sands right down the old road bed into the roundabout there at Shores. So you can go either way from there. And they, they have, have approved or accepted everything we requested all the way to the traffic light, with the one exception, they still have to inspect the old box shelters. They're built out of concrete on the bottom, concrete on the top, and brick on the sides. And we had a thousand-year flood a couple of years ago, put a lot of pressure on an old culvert. And they're reviewing those to be sure they're safe before they turn them over to the city. But pretty much everything else, the overlay, the alignment of the spur, the trails coming into Main Street to protect bike, bicycles that do choose to come into town. Everything we asked for so far is, that's got an answer, it has been.
They, it's meant for the, they is meant for the fire department?
Is out at the road where it was. He said it's not six feet difference from where it was.
We did document that with them, so they're only once.
Yes.
It's not just a phone call, right?
Right. And he said that they may have to cut in some into the driveway for the road. But if they do, they'll do it in stages, so it doesn't block the driveway. And they will replace the concrete with the same.
Yeah, and that's okay. I just wanna make sure it's documented, so later on we know exactly. Because sometimes there's misunderstanding when we talk on the phone always.
That drawing had it on it, and they, and it's based on the documentation they've done. Now, they didn't bring us additional documents, but they did leave us the drawing that has it located at that point.
Is, is that possible, you or David could send a follow-up email to them saying, confirming this discussion? This is recapping it, basically saying this is, our understanding is different, let us know, so.
Well, and right now, their engineer was going back to put everything, finalize everything as drawn. He was making notes. He left us a copy, and he made notes on the copy he had. So when that's finalized, we're supposed to get.
Okay, so when it's finalized, we get the, the findings, okay?
Sure.
I have a question, since we talked about, are our traffic lights here? So we approved that building to go down. The two-story that we approved, I don't know how long ago. But are our traffic lights going to have crosswalks? Or no? No, okay. It would, okay, no, I just, just a question. All right, thank you.
It will have the emergency button at the fire station, so that it can clear the road. The intersection is.
Okay, okay, no, that's right.
There are, but it doesn't have the crosswalks.
Okay, that's fine.
Anything else? Okay, the next item is the S O Ps. I did discuss those with each one of the department heads, and I do know that they are being worked on. They are not completed, and there are ways for completion.
So who's working, since we don't have a public works director yet, who's doing that one?
Julie.
Julie, okay. I just have some concerns if they're meeting, and she mentioned in February they met, and then all the way to June. I know we had the land swap in there, but I really feel like some communication needs to really be followed up with, with residents. So Julie's the point of contact for Public Works?
It's, right now, it's her and Jeff. Jeff is our director by contract.
Yeah, I know that.
And he's doing a lot of the day-to-day planning and, and all of that. Julie is, is the primary point of contact for most of the residents.
From, okay. So any headway then on the, the Public Works Director?
I sent you an email today about that.
Can you share it?
Dubon?
Can you share it? I don't know.
I mean, is it?
That was the purpose of the email today, is we don't need to discuss.
Okay. I didn't, I did not receive that.
If you didn't receive it, let me know.
Okay.
And I'll resend it, but it, 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 today it explains the whole situation as it is.
Okay, that's fine. I just, with, if they're commu, I guess, Mr. Mayor, if you could follow up and just keep residents informed of things, maybe just like a two-week follow-up, hey, it's gonna be done here. So is it fair for these people in Ridgewood to say, by our work session, their signs should be fixed and their drainage should be done?
Yeah, that should be fair.
That should.
Now, I don't know about the drainage done, because depending on the dollar amount, it may have to go to public bid.
Oh, no, that, you said you were bringing dirt in the, the, this.
The drainage, yeah, those will be done in the.
Well, no, R D O C, that's different. I'm, I'm worried about this, because it looks like a small something could fall in the hole. So it's fair in, in two weeks at the, at the next session. So on the follow-up, could you do a follow-up on Ridgewood to update us on this? Follow-up on Ridgewood for the signs? Because I saw how short those signs are and, and these, because this is a, especially if we know about it and something would happen.
The signs, the situation with the signs is they put in. The signs are legitimate signs that you would do on a street. It's like children at play and things like that, but they're on short posts.
They're, yeah, they're tiny, you can't, if a car parks there, they can't.
When someone's parked there, you can't see it.
So, yeah, they should be regular signs.
I think at one time, a few years ago, they wanted them on the small signs, because they hit one big and protruding, and.
Okay.
And so now, behind the cars, they're not visible, so we're going to provide those.
To bump them, okay. So that's fair, so in two, in two weeks from now, follow-up, those issues, R D O C and two sixty-four is different.
Right.
But these issues can be fixed, and will be fixed in two weeks.
I guess one of my biggest issues, from, from Public Works Director, I, it's the same thing Eric has. Because like with my water main, we have three, four weeks, and today it's been six.
Yeah.
And the only thing I heard is when I called Kate's ass.
Okay.
And she called, she told me, you should be week after next, this week. And I haven't heard anything, it's Tuesday. And I sort of wanna be there when they start, because I've got six, just some water heads, and my irrigation's all jacked up, and I'm going, I don't have time.
Right.
So like, if a resident needs to be able to plan to be there, then they need to be told, because a lot of people have very busy schedules and don't have time to get, be like, oh, I'm gonna be there in a week, two months. And as customers of the city, they shouldn't have to wait until a team arrives. They should know well beforehand, of course.
Right, it should be there too.
If I get my house name, I know when the guy's coming.
Right.
So, and my investment in the city is very much more than the eight thousand dollars it costs to get my house.
Right.
So that's my biggest complaint, what Eric is trying to say. And I think that's been the biggest complaint in the four months that I've been on this board, is we get a complaint and we do not follow up. And that, to me, is unacceptable, because we are servants of the city, of city residents, and we're doing bad job, we're giving people that we're supposed to serve. So that's just my.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? I, I'm sorry, I don't know, I, let me turn. Can you, until we have a public director at this time, make sure that at least you copy it whenever new ticket comes in, or suddenly comes in, at least once a day, you look at it, see what new come? Is that a priority? Because I don't think it's fair to put that on somebody else to make that, those priority, because none of them really are. I think you, you should make that call at least to some extent. And back to S O P, I know the police chief had S O P previously, right?
Yeah, we, we've had one for years.
For years, so his is done. Then public work, we don't have one, and we don't have the, I could do it, right?
Yeah, we don't have the direction.
So we can't do that one. And Kimmy's doing hers, so we really, it seems like we're getting back again to that public work, and seems like we have to really put a lot of energy in that. And that's why I really like you to be copied and, on, you know, when the new ticket opens, I know it's a lot of work perhaps for you to see every day what's coming in, but you can prioritize it that way until you get somebody. Now, when you got somebody, you can delegate it.
Jeff does delegate the daily activities, and he does organize the day.
Obviously, that might not be as good of a priority as, I think it's still, you need to be involved with it, because he has a full-time job somewhere else, honestly. By the time he delegated and fought back, you need to have more hands on this task, I think, as much as I hate to tell you that, because I'd like you to do follow-up, not.
He, we talk on a routine basis, and I'm involved. So that is something that, I mean, I can do more, and I will do more, but I do know that, I mean, I do routinely get updates from him a couple of times a day in a lot of cases.
Yeah, I'm not really, I, I don't know what the process is right now. But it's not working, obviously. If it was working, we wouldn't have them here looking at those pictures and other people. I really think we need to, you need to more hands on this one, I really think so. That's my opinion anyway, it's my suggestion.
Anyone else?
Yes. Of course, the traffic light on, is on the airway here. Daniel, but what about the spot, can't think of man's name down there off Wager Brook?
Right, there's two things going on with him now. And the new guy with Public Works is, that's something that's, he's going to be doing in the next two weeks as well. And in addition to that, they, on the backside of his property, there was a vehicle ran through the fence. There's no signage, and it happens there quite often. And we've got signs ordered showing the curves. We've got signs in and out for speed on that road, because the GPS show stat is the primary road from the south to the airport. So anyone going to the airport that's not been there from the south before, in a lot of cases, when they're going to the airport, they're in a hurry, they're flying through that road.
We almost got hit the other day down there from a guy coming around a curb. He must've been doing fifty.
Yeah, so we're going to be doing those interactive signs there. And we're also gonna put the curb caution signs up in addition to that. So there's, that road's gonna be addressed. I'm also working with the county on their side.
Can we get an update on that too?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When I was talking about hands-on, what I meant by that, communicating with the citizen too, like, it's gonna be a week or two weeks, or tomorrow, somebody, I think that would speak quite a bit.
Obviously.
Yeah, good. So I think it's, continue doing that, that would be the best thing to do. Keeping them informed, until you have a public director.
All right. Anyone else? Yes?
Ms. Erica, when it comes to SOPs, we also need to add on that list, we need SOPs for building, the building department. We need SOPs for building department.
Building?
We need, uh, we need SOPs for our court department. We need SOPs for our planning department. These are all SOPs that we need as well included in as department hits. So.
Court, does that fall under?
The city pays, the city pays for her salaries, so.
Yes.
And I'm not asking for a ton of description for, for court, but we need to know what her job duties are as a court clerk. And I know she has a job description, but we need to know what her, you know, what, what her expectations are, what our expectations are, her, for her SOPs.
And those were requested as well, I talked off-world on that front.
Okay.
You said building, court and?
Building, court and planning.
Right.
Yeah, we need SOPs for all three of those departments as well.
Well, that's okay, hold on. Um, yeah, I guess the, the biggest takeaway, kind of like MC said, if you meet with somebody or a group like Ridgewood to follow, just to follow up, if you meet personally with them, so that they know that they're not forgotten, if they're not going directly to Julie.
Anything else? Next item is the resolution to ratify the, uh, contract with Jack Tyler Engineering for the, uh, emergency door, uh, repairs. And it's on the, you weren't here, I went over this at the work session, our, uh, control panel for the lift station in Otter Creek, our big lift station with the huge motors and all, our pumps, has been hit by lightning a time or two, it's been, uh, it's getting older, it's been opened and closed, been repairs made, different things, and now it's to the point, they had problems with it the other day and had to pull it apart and clean wiring and do things where corrosion's building up and it's kind of met its life expectancy. And I won't be able to replace those panels so that, for a safety issue, yes, that's the, that Jack Tyler.
So it's not a, it's not a re- repair, it's a replacement?
It's a repair to the overall, uh, control unit, but it's a replacement of the front door panels. This isn't a replacement of the entire control unit, but it is a replacement of the door panels and the components that are mounted on the door panels.
That's what this is.
That's what this is.
Oh, see, it says door panel, it says, it says control panel.
Yeah, that's, that's, these front door panels have the, the manual control and automatic control on them and they've got wiring and they've got, uh, several of the relays and things mounted to them, it's, it's not just a, when I say door panel, I don't mean just the cover that you close in front of it, it's an operational panel.
It's motor control disconnect box.
So.
Is what it's really for.
I, I.
Like, it's, it's.
I guess what I'm getting at, it, it sounds to me more like a replacement than a repair.
It's a replacement of the door, but it's not a replacement of the whole box and everything in it. It's.
And it's mounted on the door.
And there's a number of items mounted on the door, but there's other items mounted in the box that were not replaced. There's, uh, big, huge control units in the box that were not replaced. There's a lot of things within there that's, that's above and beyond, but this is replacing the control panel itself that you are actually face, that you're facing, that you actually have knob or a screw system on the side of it. And when you have damage to other items inside there, you open it up and this swings out as a, as a second door to the overall box. But this, they refer to it as the panels, control panels.
So he's not warrantying his work. It says, uh, only warranties that apply to these products are those of the manufacturer of products which can be passed on to, by this company to them. No other warranty of any kind is given connection with the sale or above that. Makes no warranty of any kind expressed and applied to marketability for this or particular purpose.
Would you like to address?
I always, this is one of the failures I see in a lot of our contracts, is we don't have warranties.
Yes.
When we have road repairs, there's no guarantees of any kind.
Well, page one of the today, uh, that gives you an outline of what, what they've actually included in that.
Right.
It is, what I would say it is, it's a combination of new and restored and old.
Okay.
Uh, so you've got several new components in there and several components that are going to continue to exist as well. When it comes to, uh, this type of installation, that's not uncommon, to where the, uh, workmanship from the company is actually not covered, it's covered through the warranty of the insp-, of the, uh, new material. So we have, you have a, see if your digital readout screen goes out, that warranty must be obtained through the digital readout company, not Jack Tyler, and they would usually be paid by, uh, our digital readout company to come in and, uh, make those repairs or changes. But you see a lot of times where they, they do not warranty information whenever you're, it's not a completely new product. We're keeping some old, some new, that's not uncommon.
I, I guess my concern is what if, when they're doing all this, they'll, and some, they do something wrong accidentally or, I'm not saying they're wrong.
Yes.
But their insulation is improper, there's nothing to do with any kind of insulation or cover that.
If their installation is improper, uh, typically we would hold paint, because it would show up fairly quickly.
Okay, it would be breached on time.
Yes, that's a whole different item.
Okay.
And Jack Tyler has been around a long time and they stand behind that one, so if they do make a mistake, they stand behind.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Yes.
Got a motion by Erica, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC, we've already done discussions, is there any more?
No.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That did pass, what is the resolution number, please?
Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six.
Okay, dash twenty-six. Next item on the agenda is, uh, ordinance to amend ordinance twenty-two oh seven and assign territories, uh, to the next, uh, portion of the city. The, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules in place this on third reading by title only?
Second.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second by, uh, Mike. Roll call.
Let's do Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
City case brings in county Arkansas awards to that order number two thousand twenty-two dash oh seven and sign certain territories as the city of case brings to award.
Okay, and, um, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'm over here, approve.
Got a motion by Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. And discussion, I know that, uh, Justin mentioned this one earlier.
Just a short point, um, your, uh, council elections, uh, are citywide, uh, but, you know, obviously with this type, this annulation plus the earlier annulation that happened earlier this year as well, that went into more blood and specifically your wards balanced, so, or you had a couple of, uh, discussions with, uh, Mayor, uh, with David about it, approaching regional planning to get their help and kind of, uh, get some proposed reassignments of wards, uh, to, to, to balance those and we're bringing that back forward, but, so I just wanted to add that point that likely not staying the way it is now, there aren't the changes.
I guess that was my big concern, is, you know, more than I was being, me and Mark, we would be covering more of it, not necessarily from an election standpoint, but, you know, we get our, I get High Park on me all the time, and Mark probably gives a value on him, Eric is great with, and now I'm sort of picking up more, Mark now I'm picking up more than others.
Yeah.
They just tend to reach out, obviously, to, where they look on the website where their ward is, so obviously I think the fair balance of the council members, we need to work on getting a sort of read of this time, you know. Obviously, my other big concern is when Mrs. Thornton runs against me in November, because he's gonna be a board member, I'll have to deal with that, but, uh, that's a joke, hopefully, but, uh, I just think that's the biggest thing, is that we'll be at, like, two hundred and sixty houses to ours plus the other ones, so we're sort of out of balance with representation, I think.
That's part of why it's been done this way initially is because July, last part of July is filing period. And there's really not time to get everything done.
No, I totally understand on that part, it's going forward.
Right, and we've already been in touch with, uh, uh, each other and we're going to Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning as soon as, uh, we, as soon as everything's finalized and we're able to do so, so that we can get it balanced, but at least for the election period, it needs to be in place, so.
So is there anything where it's balanced, where all of a sudden, since you're in High Park, let's see if I have Mark, your location where Jerry's all of a sudden cut different? Or are we, like, um, what do you call it? Grandfathered in until the next election? Do you understand what I'm saying?
When they, when they did this last time, they took into account each person that's on the council's addresses and they made the adjustments to keep them in their board so that you weren't dislodging someone just by the alignment of the board. And I would assume they will do that again.
I, I mean, I'm okay with the work balance changing, but like, since we were established before, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I've, I've had that happen to me, you know, with school board realigns too, and they, they take into account the.
The current?
The current, yes. And, and usually, we'll see when they come back, usually they come back with a couple of different suggestions on ways that it can be drawn and that'll be presented to you guys for, uh, for choice. But, um, but Jerry's right, and he said, I mean, it needs to be.
Redisturbing it, yeah?
Yes. But that is the way they did it last time, so that they, they did the balancing with taking into account, trying to keep those in the same boards.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What does it take to add a council seat to the new area?
That would be a, a Jeff point, I mean.
We need to add council seats based on popular health or population, or how does that work?
Oh, I didn't even look at that, uh, it might, it might require an election because I'm going to, for your, uh, terms requires an election, but I'll be happy to look at that and report back, um, here is some population issues too, you know, and stuff, but, okay, we'll get it, we'll, we'll, uh, next meeting of work session.
Okay, thank you.
So the purpose of this right now is to, to start working on the redisturbing.
Right. The purpose now is to assign an award, so in this election, they're a part of the election. And Kim, and then the immediately following, we will be looking at, uh, alignment to where we balance them out.
And that would happen before election, right?
The balancing would not happen before election, it can't that quick. That's why we're having to assign and have, it might be late this year after the election, yeah, but it's, it's not time to do it before the, uh, filing deadline and then changing it in the middle of the election would be just as bad as, as, which is you could be changing where people vote, or where people that can run which ward they're in. So they have a right to be able to file, know that they're filing for their ward and be able to do the, complete the election in the ward they're in, so that's why it would probably be at the end of the election.
At the end of the election?
Yeah, there will be discussions earlier, but we're not going to change award while someone's running from a ward.
True.
So that's, that's why I said that it would more than likely be at the end of that election, so we know who's in which wards. Then if someone in a situation like that, someone gets replaced, then it may change the way they do the realignment, so that, at that point, so that's why it's. Any other discussion?
So how long usually it takes?
How long, it didn't take long last time, it was about.
You did it in two thousand twenty-two, in Terry, Terry, right?
Yeah, it was, it was three or four months, but it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't like it to, huge amount of time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
One more question. Who decides?
The council does. The Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning is a neutral group that's out of Springdale and they look at population and they'll give you two or three options based on that pop, to balance the population between all three wards. And then the council reviews those and fa-, and votes on the final ward map. Sure. Okay, any other discussion here? Uh, roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay.
Was, was that number eleven?
That, is that number eleven?
That is number eleven.
Okay. And there's not an emergency clause on that, is there? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the classification of the city. It, um, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place this on third and final reading by title only. So move. Got a motion by Mike, do I hear a second? Second by Mark. Um, roll call?
MC?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Okay.
Uh, city case brings in county Arkansas awards to that section eleven point zero two classification of city, if it's applicable code, there are various other purposes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Got a motion by MC, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy, discussion? Okay, roll call?
Who seconded the first motion?
Jeremy.
The first motion, there was, was Mark.
Yeah, the first motion was Mark.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seconded.
That's what threw me off, like, I'm, Mike, sorry. Um, let's do MC? Yes, Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, that did pass, that's twenty twenty-four dash twelve, do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause?
I'm over to approve the emergency clause.
Mark made a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeremy? Roll call?
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
All right, that did pass. Next item is the ordinance to amend the regulations for the municipal code, uh, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules in place this on third and final reading?
Second.
Got a motion by Jeremy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica? Roll call?
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
City case brings in county Arkansas awards to that section nine point three zero regulations on a municipal code, how would the layer of emergency for the purposes?
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mike, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC? Any discussion? Roll call?
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Hey, that was approved, do I hear a motion to accept the emergency clause?
Second.
Got a motion by Erica, second?
Second.
Second by MC? Roll call?
Jerry?
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
That's twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. Next item is the, uh, ordinance amending chapter thirty-four on public safety and law enforcement. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading?
So moved.
Got a motion by Erica, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC, any, or, roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes. City case brings in Kansas Arkansas orders to amend chapter thirty-four public safety and law enforcement of the city case, and municipal code, and various other purposes.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Got a motion by Jeremy, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Mark, discussion? Roll call?
MC?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved, and do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mike, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by MC, roll call?
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
MC?
Yes.
That was approved, that's, um, twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a question real quick for council, has anybody thought about Christmas in Cave?
Uh, what?
Who has a committee?
Christmas in Cave, I mean, what, what does the council want to do this year? And I also need to know what a budget would be for us on that as well.
Christmas in Cave?
Yes.
Perfect.
So make sure we put that on there, because I've had people come to me and ask about Christmas in Cave.
I'll be fired up for Christmas in Cave in two weeks.
Okay, so bring up your ideas, think about what you want to do, um, we also have a big pancake breakfast coming as well in September, um, we're already starting on that, um, getting donations for pancake breakfast, um, we're also needing gift bags, baskets for the silent auction as well, so if you know any vendors out there that would be willing to donate gift baskets, we're taking as many of those as we possibly can for the silent auction, so, for the pancake breakfast, and maybe that's the same weekend that you'd like to do some work.
So, the community building should be done by Christmas, correct?
Should be, should be.
Is it that correct?
It should be, yes.
But I still gotta find ways to put, um, crap, crap to vendors, so if we're gonna go forward with it, I need to start looking at a location to have it, because it's gonna be bigger than it was last year.
Yeah, it's much bigger than it used to be, oh, no.
So.
There's, unless they say it in that respect, but it's not.
Cam, I know somebody that really wants to be involved with that, I'm gonna give her a name to you.
Perfect, because, I mean, it's gonna take more than just Lisa and I, we need to do it ourselves, so the more we can get, the better.
She's done it in different towns.
I'll let it, let it, the one barrier, we need some, some people with muscle, because it takes a lot of that too, so.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and, and, right, for your idea.
Mr. Mayor, since we, well, this anyway, I just wanna make another statement if possible. I just wanna congratulate Cam for her achievement, and I think that's something that we need to all be proud of, and congratulate her for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? entertain a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Erica?
Second.
Second by MC, back to you all.